Okay, so just to give you a quick overview of the report. I don't want to get in your way there. So this month, and you'll see, we'll be voting on this a little bit later, but we're going to switch around the calendar for next year. But right now, we're going to look at the 2018, in particular, PSAT report. But I also brought the 2017 numbers, so you could do a little bit of comparison there and hopefully see some evidence of growth. And then we're going to take a look at a proposal that we're planning to put forth to the Governance Committee in May about changing, shifting the school day. We're not asking for a vote. This is just to kind of put it out there for something for you to think about over the next few weeks. And then we have a special guest star here with us, Mr. Jordan Hill, who's one of our teachers. He's in the back. And he's going to be talking to you about academic excellence at its best here at AMSA. It's a new proposal that we're, well, it's a new project that we've launched. And it's the Diderot Academic Society. And Jordan's going to present to us about that in a few minutes. This is something we've been working on for months now. And then we'll have a community outreach update and then some razzle-dazzle time. Okay, here we start, PSAT report. If you take a look at some of these numbers here, so this, these are mean scores. This is 2018. And what I did, and this is 2017, so what I've done is color-coded it for you. So you can take a look at, in red, this is the ninth grade class, their mean score between the math and the reading/writing section. And then this, they've obviously become 10th graders here in 2018. So their mean score was 1,081 in ninth grade, but as 10th graders, now they've taken a jump up to 1181. This is a different test. This is the PSAT that the 10th and 11th graders take. The ninth graders take a PSAT 8/9. But College Board says that they've graded the test so that you can see growth between ninth grade and 10th grade. And the same thing with our 10th graders. The mean score of the PSAT was 1190. When they became 11th graders, it went up to 1237. And then you can see, sorry Roger, I'm in your way. But you can see the state and the national numbers, too. Does anyone have any questions about any of those numbers? So that's a summary slide, just so you can take a quick look at it. I also have slides from, you'll see the next one here, because I just, I thought this was interesting. I like numbers and I like statistics. But this is the PSAT for the 11th grade scores for the fall of 2018. So the kids took the test in October, and then we got the results back like in December, which is why it's kind of off that we're reviewing these so late in the year. But so you can see the school, we had 135 students take the test. The mean score was 1237. So the benchmarks that they're looking for for the English writing is 460. That's the benchmark that College Board is looking for, for our students to meet. And for math, it's 510. So what they're saying is that 90% of our students reached both benchmarks. The English, 96% of them reached that. The math, 90% reached that score or higher. And then there was only 3% of our students who took the test, of 135 who did not meet either one of the benchmarks. Now, I think it's pretty impressive when you start looking at the-
What are these benchmarks? Are they means or are they lower than, what?
They are what College Board wants to see as a target. So they're saying that the student is on par to be-
It's on a college track.
Yes. If they're able to reach these scores for these tests.
For sort of just a four-year college track?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is, they have their benchmarks, which says if the students reach this, then they are ready and getting prepared to take the SAT. They're making progress. We obviously want to far exceed those numbers. And when you take a look at the state and the total group, and that means nationally, and there's some international students who take it, too, but nationally, and you see that none, that in the state, 29% of the students who took the test didn't hit either one of those benchmarks. And 30% in the nation. And at AMSA, only 3% of our students didn't hit those benchmarks. I think that's an amazing, that it really shows how well our students are doing on the PSAT. And these are 11th graders, so these students took this test in the fall, and they're taking the SAT through the winter and spring. So there's a test at the end of January, and then March, and then May and June. And so they're getting ready. This is their final practice. And we have amazing results. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we have comparison numbers versus previous years to say-
Yeah, that's what that other one was.
Yep, so I'll shoot, actually, I have one of these slides for, so there's six of them.
Okay. I'll hold until the end of the sixth.
And it gives the same information. I don't know if you're interested in looking at them in detail. But, Mark, can you just, yep. So here's the 2018, here's our results for our 10th graders. Once again, three, only 3% of our students didn't meet both benchmarks. The next one, Mark? And then these are the results from our ninth graders. Keeping in mind that, once again, this is a different test. Our eighth graders do not take the test, just our ninth graders. But, so this is our ninth grade class. 156 students took the test, and 4% of them did not hit the benchmark that we had hoped that they would. But once again, you're looking at, on a state level, 44% did not reach the benchmark. And 39% in the nation. Now, these are the 2017 numbers. So the first slide I showed you was a summary, just of the means from these reports. But in 2017, we're still in the same, you know, in the same ballpark, for the most part. It's 3% here that met none. 91% had met both this particular year in 2017. Now, it's not, it was 90% in 2018. And these are the 10th graders. I think we were 3% this year in 2018, 4% in 2019. And ninth grade, both 4%. I'd have to look to the next to each other to see exactly on the percentages on the other two. Any questions on the PSAT numbers? I think our kids did an amazing job. Go ahead, Jean.
Do you know the rankings, where we stand with respect to other schools in Massachusetts?
I can find that number out for you, but I don't have that.
You don't?
No, sorry.
I just find that rankings are something that we can easily digest, and it's hard to wrap our mind around all of this stuff. Whereas, you know, you get a single number, you say we're a third or fifth or wherever. It really relates a lot to our thinking about it.
I'm sure it's out there. We can find it. For, I guess for me, it's interesting to me to see our numbers here compared to the state as a whole. But I can look for rankings for you.
I'll tell her not to.
Thank you.
Ellen, do you know how much of these numbers are self-selecting? In other words, at AMSA, pretty much all of our students take it. Is that kind of the norm at other schools?
It isn't. Actually, other schools do it very different ways, yep. Some schools have a Saturday program, because you can either, College Board allows you to administer the PSAT either on Wednesdays or on a Saturday. And the school has to make the choice whether they want, you know, to be taken during the school day. You are losing time in the classroom. We feel it's important enough to do that. But some schools say, we're just going to give it on Saturdays. And so that's, you know, a barrier for some of those kids who would have a difficult time getting to school. Some schools pay for it. It's free for the kids to take it. There's all kinds of different programs at different schools.
That's a very good point.
Because, I mean, I think that's super impressive, especially because it's, I don't know if we have 100% participation, but it's pretty close.
Very, very close.
And I'm not sure that that's true of the state and the-
Yep, that's true.
That's very true.
That class, there's probably 158, and so 156 took the test. So that is very impressive.
So that's just probably two people being in the same day, right? And just didn't take it?
Right.
Because they would have taken it if they were.
Or their parents don't want them testing sometimes, or whatever. But it's a small number here at AMSA.
Very small number. You know, we've committed a lot of resources to the PSAT. And, you know, our teachers do a great job helping us out to administer that, because you're testing 156 students. That's a huge effort. Okay, Mark?
Question?
Yes.
So, do we, so I sort of view, maybe if you go back a slide, that our success on here is very simple, is just another instantiation of the MCAS, that we are, we are doing very well in getting our kids above, we have no trouble talent, passing the MCAS tests with our students, the way our curriculum's laid out. We have no trouble hitting this, getting the minimally ready for college.
Absolutely. I think this is a great testament to the work that we do here, because our students, we've never taught to a test, right? We don't teach the MCAS. We don't teach to a PSAT. Our kids are working hard and they're, the curriculum takes them well beyond that. And I think that this shows in our numbers. Our kids typically aren't nervous taking tests. They have the information they need. For more than anything else, it's with the 11th graders. They have to go back and practice the math that they learned in middle school to be reminded of some of those simpler problems. I was in a math class just before break, and they were doing just that. Mr. Azeredo was working with the students, refreshing their memory from math that they learned in eighth grade, getting ready for the MCAS, so.
So what I was looking for, though, was, I don't see a comparison to say how our, comparison over time to say, in, the mean score of our 2016 class as juniors was 555. Our mean score of our 2018 class as juniors was 600. So there's no-
Well, it's here for 2017 and 2018.
The College Board, interestingly enough, on their website, you can't go back past two years worth of-
But we could record, we can record the data. So we can definitely see that students, as they go through the system, are increasing their test scores. But I'm trying to say it would be help-
Class by class.
Class by class comparison, are we, if we do something different, or if we just keep doing the same thing, are we getting better results, worse results? You know, sort of correlation between the-
Mark, can I have you go back several slides?
I don't recall seeing this minimal whatever thing before. I think that's been to the summer.
No, because it's new. The test is new, so they changed-
This MET, E-R-W, MET, E-R, math, that, the MET, whatever their-
The benchmark.
The benchmark is. That's a new thing.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing that.
This went along with the new SAT. So they've aligned it.
But I don't, but personal opinion, I don't think that that's our goal.
Right, right.
Is to have 100% of our people crossing that low, for us, a low hurdle. I want, our goal, as you described, we don't teach the test. Our goal is much higher. So what is, maybe it'll take a couple of years to get, define the metric, so what is our goal?
Mark, go back to that original summary slide for me.
And how, what percentage of our students are making it?
Yes, but I think we have to be careful, because when they change, because the average SAT score each year is different, so we will have to normalize to the average.
That's why ranking fixes all of this.
Yeah, exactly. No, that's actually a good point. That actually is a good point.
If you have rankings. So all these numbers can change as much as necessary.
I'll bring your ranking next month.
I think that actually is a good point, because otherwise you can't compare.
Right, because the test, the test itself varies from year to year.
It varies year to year, exactly.
So you can't, you can't compare.
We can continue to add to this slide in years going forward. And in the meantime, I can look for rankings and get those to you for next month.
Okay.
Got 11 minutes left.
Huh?
You've got 11 minutes.
Of my 25?
Yes.
Okay, all right, gosh. Okay. So anyways, sneak peek at the schedule change. We'll go through this really quickly. This is something that's going to go to Governance. I have May 14th there, but we're going to be talking about some date shifts. And then potentially, if it makes it through Governance, we'll come to the Board for a vote for our May Board meeting, but, and also, our bylaws would need to be amended. We want you to know that this was a teacher-initiated proposal, and it was a very reflective process. The teachers went through an amazing amount of work, which you'll see in more detail next month, that is the foundation of this proposal. We also want to point out that there's no loss on time on learning, and actually, there's quite a gain of time on learning for our athletes. Mark? So this is what it looks like. We still have eight periods per day. We have, those eight periods are still 45 minutes. The proposal is to start 10 minutes earlier, change passing time from five minutes to four minutes. When I first came to AMSA, passing time was actually three minutes. We went up to five. Might be a little too long, so we're looking at going at four. And next month, we can show you data that we can tell you, any student in the class, in the whole school, on day two of their schedule, how many steps they actually take per day between classes. We are taking out homeroom, and the students would report directly to first period. This is not unusual. It's done a lot at high schools, at most high schools, actually. And the day would end at 2:45. You can see here, lunches are still 22, 23, 22 minutes, 45-minute classes. And by eliminating homeroom and moving that passing time, we are coming in 10 minutes earlier in the morning, but we save 30 minutes at the end of the day. That's the proposal. Mark? The benefits, just, I want to give you one quick benefit to the, because once again, we're not going to get into this much further, but the benefit for our athletes, right now, leaving 3:15, so, you know, we're only talking about class times missed between August 27, 2018, November 2nd, 50 days of school for just fall sports. But they analyzed every single one of our athletes from the fall, and how many periods, how many minutes a day they're missing to leave class, to get on a bus, to go to practice somewhere, to go to a game to someplace. And at 3:15, when we have that dismissal, our kids, our athletes are missing 5,660 minutes, or 109 and a half hours, or 140, almost 146 periods a season, okay? That's all of them leaving to go to participate in sports, which we believe is very important, and we want them to participate in those. But they're losing a lot of time, because all the other schools that they're competing against get out much earlier in the day. If we change to 2:45, we're reducing that down to 2,505 minutes of missed class time, or just 41, not that we want them to miss 41 hours of class time, but that's what dropping us by a half hour would drop us, too, from 109 to 42. And then missing from 146 periods a day to 55.67 periods a day. I don't, I mean, those results are absolutely amazing. And I think that's, when the teachers came and presented this idea to us, that just, we couldn't, we couldn't believe, that the number of hours our kids are missing with sports. Okay, so I'm under a huge time crunch here. So I'm going to turn the time over to Jordan Hill for a Diderot Academic Society project that we're working on. And, next slide, Mark? Just a quick little introduction, Mr. Hill has been with us, joined AMSA in January of 2018. He teaches AP Literature, English 9, and Philosophy. He's amazing. We're thrilled and honored to have him as a member of our faculty. And I'm turning the time over, Jordan.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having me here to talk. So we're pretty excited, Dr. Lewis and I, and everyone else, pretty much. We're really excited to have this new five-pillar interdisciplinary academic society that we're proposing here and that we're actually running with. The idea behind the Diderot Society is basically to promote the joy and love of learning. What's unique about the Diderot Society is that we are designing it to be an intellectual, AMSA's first intellectual academic club for students. It's five pillars, so if you would go, Dr. Lewis, if you want to scroll down and show the Board, the different thinkers, we're hoping that this sort of inspires students. This is going to be kind of an Enlightenment intellectual society here at AMSA, and we're hoping that this gets students inspired to talk about the things that they're studying in class, outside of class. So the idea here is, this, the Diderot Society is obviously named after the French Enlightenment philosopher, Denis Diderot. And it has five pillars, if you would go to the About section, Dr. Lewis. The main hub, the central focus here is the actual club. So what we're going to have is an after-school academic society. It's a weekly academic philosophy, sort of a young philosopher's society, which they have at other high schools. We're calling this the Diderot Society. And essentially, we're going to run this club like a class, not in terms of the extreme rigor of tons and tons of work, but the students will take home readings over the course of the week. They will show up at our club meetings, and we'll have philosophical discussions about contemporary issues. We're structuring our curriculum for this society based on the book, Justice, by Michael Sandel. He's a Harvard professor. And we're going to sort of chop up the curriculum into a bunch of different units, essentially, starting with utilitarianism, moving into Kantian ethics, Aristotle, John Rawls, basically Enlightenment thinkers. So we'll be exploring Enlightenment ideas, teaching them the philosophies. They'll go home and do the readings. And then they'll come in, and after we've taught them the ideas, they'll use those ideas as lenses through which to view contemporary issues and actually have civil discourse and debate. The five pillars are the club, obviously, that's the central, that's the central pillar there. Orbiting around that are sort of a bunch of different initiatives that students can get involved with. In fact, they have to be a part of the club, be involved with at least one of these initiatives. The academic journal that we're starting at this school is called the North Star, named after Frederick Douglass's paper that he started. We're doing a podcast, which is designed to promote academic excellence. So we'll be interviewing teachers and students and having intellectual discussions via a podcast, and also keeping the community up to date with what we're doing in the Diderot Society. We'll be doing bi-annual interdisciplinary colloquium nights, which means that in December and in May, we're actually going to do TED Talks and debates and things like that, with students being involved and teachers being involved. And then we're also planning to have an international trip, where we take the students to some, you know, hub of Enlightenment thinking, whether it's, you know, France, or Germany, or England, or Greece, or something like that. So that's essentially the setup of the society. How much time do I have here?
Three minutes.
Okay. So essentially, what's unique about the Diderot Society is that the Diderot Society, if students participate in Diderot Society in good stead, they will actually earn a designation on their transcript and special cords for being a part of this intellectual endeavor on their, when they graduate, they'll get a special colored cord. We don't have anything like this at AMSA. We have, you know, National Honor Society, where students are doing service and things like that. But this is really an intellectual society. We want kids debating, engaging in civil discourse. One of the things that we care about with this club is teaching students how to disagree respectfully in an open forum of debate, in a sort of open marketplace of ideas. So we're going to teach them these philosophical ideas, and then have structured discussions each week, you know, using the philosophies that we've taught them as lenses. Some of the requirements that students will have to meet to be a part of this and stay in good stead with the Diderot Society, they basically have to show up, meet attendance requirements, you know, show that they're engaged and thoughtful, thoughtful, respectful, active members of our club. You know, one of the things that we care about is the extent to which this society is able to promote our core values, integrity, community, and excellence. We want this to be enhancing of those different values. So obviously, this will enhance community in the sense that we're going to have students from all walks of life, from all different backgrounds, coming together to discuss issues respectfully and civilly. Obviously, it promotes academic excellence, because they'll be using what they've learned in school and what they've learned in the Diderot Society as fodder for discussion and debate and critical thinking. And also, absolutely, so that's excellence and community and, oh my goodness, what's the other one?
It's right there.
Integrity. So that, thank you. I'm in here. So integrity matters to us in this club, and that's actually one of the requirements for the club. And so in order to stay in good stead with the Diderot Society, students, you know, have to, you know, they can't be cheating. Plagiarism will get you kicked out of the club. You know, being respectful, you know, students in the halls and in their classrooms, you know, being civic-minded at the school, being involved in things. And so there are a couple of things. The other thing that the students have to do to stay in good stead with Diderot is to take part in one of these initiatives. So students have to, we'll sit them down, and we basically create a plan for them. They have to get involved with one of the other pillars. So everyone has to show up to the club meetings, but students also have to pick one other thing that they'd like to be involved in, so they can contribute a piece to the Academic Journal. They can help edit our podcasts and do interviews. They can set up and plan and host the colloquium nights. They can help us plan the trips. So this, this will get students involved, it will build community, and obviously, it's enhancing and reinforcing excellence. And so that's about, that's about all I wanted to say. Another thing that I suppose I'll close on is that this idea came out of the Academic Excellence Committee. So Dr. Lewis and I have been talking about this for a long time, but we really developed these ideas with all of the feedback and the input from colleagues at the Academic Excellence Committee. And we've gotten a lot of support and a lot of great feedback, and that's sort of molded and shaped the direction of the society. And another thing that I want to say is that we've seen an extreme level of excitement and involvement. We've been hosting these sort of brainstorming sessions with students, so that they could have some input into, you know, the direction of the club. And we're getting 20 students show up and staying until 5 o'clock to discuss where they want this to go. You know, we're going to elect cabinet members, you'll have a president, you'll have a vice president, but we're really excited about this, and we just hope that it's something that can make, something that can be special and unique about us. We want the community and we want other schools to know that we do this unique thing, the Diderot Society, that I don't think any other school is doing. So it's kind of a young philosopher's club, but it has many components to it, and we think that will really give us an edge in a lot of ways.
What grades is this open to?
10 through 12. And the reason that is, is because we wanted to open it to 9 through 12, but some of the issues that we're discussing, not only do they have to be dealt with with nuance and sophistication, and we want the debate to be fluent, and we want things to go well, but also there are just issues probably ninth graders aren't ready to engage with yet, right? So if we're studying utilitarianism as a philosophy, and one of our contemporary issues is immigration, we want students to be able to have nuanced, thoughtful opinions, whatever those opinions may be. So this society is really about heterodoxy and giving students a chance to engage in critical thinking. Other questions?
Is it only for students?
No, actually. So one of the great things about this is we're hoping that this society can enhance, can sort of foster interdisciplinary collaboration. So many of the teachers have expressed interest in showing up, attending the meetings, teaching concepts and things like that. I have a background in philosophy, and Dr. Lewis, obviously, has a background in history. And so we're hoping that, you know, combining our powers will, will give the students, you know, solid foundation, the ideas that we're teaching them. But also, we're inviting math teachers and science teachers. So for example, when we discuss, say, Kantian ethics, maybe we'll spend, maybe we'll meet and talk about stem cells, or maybe we'll need a science person for that. So we're inviting colleagues to show up and give presentations and interact with the students. We're hoping that kind of brings us together.
How can we, sorry. How can we be so, how can we, it sounds great. How can we be so unique, since it sounds so great? You would think other schools would embrace this.
Well, they have young philosopher's clubs, they have debate teams. One of the reasons that we're doing this, in fact, is to kind of get away from the overly rigidly structured debate team style model, where students are doing these hyper-organized, structured group discussions and other things like that. This is a chance for students to respond to each other face-to-face, in person, for us to sit around in a circle and talk about complex issues at a deeper level, right? So we'll be asking, you know, if we talk about, you know, income inequality, we'll be talking about, what is the telos of America? We'll be debating about that, instead of the sort of superficial partisan back and forth. We're getting down to the very deep philosophical roots of why we believe what we believe.
And Jean, actually, Hofstra University has an honors college, and they have a program that's called Culture and Expression. It's very similar to this. It's interdisciplinary, they do these trips, they have podcasts, it's like, it sounds like the program my daughter's in in college right now, so.
It does sound similar, and I would say that the one thing that makes this unique is that we're taking a kind of Enlightenment string to it. We're kind of focusing on classical historical Enlightenment ideas that have sort of shaped the modern West. So that's our idea.
But relevant to the current events of today.
Totally relevant. Totally relevant.
Exactly, yeah, that's great.
Kristin, you had a question?
What I was going to say is, you know, it does sound fabulous, but, you know, it's another international trip for the students. How many did we have this year?
Oh, it's, that's an optional part of it.
Yeah, but I think that's, I think that's tough for a club where everyone is invited to then need to or want to participate, and it's a financial burden again on the students, so I think that that's a little...
That's something we've talked about.
That is one of our concerns, too, and so that is sort of the international trip question, Mark, right? And so, we're certainly not going to do it in spring of 2020, and so we're trying to figure out if and when it's possible to do that trip.
But you said you're going to the hub of Enlightenment thinking.
That's the idea.
And Boston came to my mind.
Yeah, I thought you said...
Do a local trip to Paris.
Yeah, me too.
Definitely thought of field trips to Harvard, go to attend Blanchard Harvard. It's a great idea, Jean, and MIT, Brown, any number of great universities that we have in Massachusetts. So we could do, if we don't do a trip to a Mecca like Paris, we could do trips to a Mecca like Harvard.
I think one of the things that I find so exciting about it is so many of our extracurricular academic activities, speech and debate, math team, science bowl, quiz bowl, which of course is near, they're competition-based, and I think it's one of the things that AMSA has sort of had as a niche, is this competitive nature, and I just love this idea of exploring a non-competitive celebration of learning and that being, I just, I think it's fabulous.
So when's the podcast going to start?
Rule's ready to drop it. He's like, he's on board.
Please come and join us. I mean, I agree with that. As Jordan was saying, this is, this works as a community organization. We want math teachers, science teachers, history teachers, English teachers, we want board members, students, parents. The more discussion and debate, the better. Keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is so exciting. It's been, it's been months in the making. One of the ways that I know that this little, this project, this program is unique, Jean, is, is because it was actually born in Dr. Lewis's mind over a weekend. And so, and quickly, Jordan was brought in. But, but, yes, yes. The very seed of it. So we're very excited about it, and I really, I believe this could be the beginning of the very foundation of academic excellence here at AMSA. One of the things that excites me the most about it, too, Jess, is that it's for all students, all students, all backgrounds, all abilities. This is for students who are looking to find joy of learning, and it's, no one will be kept out because their GPA isn't a 4.0. You can have a student who wants to debate these issues, who's passionate about these issues, loves these things, and spends hours reading at home about these issues, but they are going to have a place in this society, and it's going to spark joy of learning through all our students, and we are all very committed. Okay, we're going out to community outreach here. Synovian has been working with four of our seniors, one of our juniors, and they've just completed their nervous system class to the lab of seventh graders. Each of those students will be awarded a $2,500 scholarship from Synovian, and, Mark, if you click on this and just, you'll see, this is a one-minute video to show you our students in action with the seventh grade class.
The nervous system is a network of nerve cells and fibers that transmit nerve impulses throughout the body. This allows you to control your body and for all parts of your body to communicate with each other. It's also important to know that the electrical signal that passes through neurons is also called an action potential. It's like, I have reflexes.
It feels weird.
It's a one, it's a two.
Okay. Wait, that one's getting better.
What? It's not smaller.
Smaller.
Yeah.
It's really smaller.
Ooh!
Really quiet, right?
Whoa! What'd you say? You're like, oh, what's it called? People got smaller.
So not only did our five participating students, who worked with scientists from Synovian over a number of weeks, didn't, they learned so much and took so much from this, they went back and they shared it with their seventh-grade younger students here at AMSA, and you saw the joy in their faces, the smiles, the laughter. That is true community there, and it's academic excellence at its very best. How did this opportunity come about? This was all Mark Vidal. Mark had a connection with Synovian, and it was actually an idea that Mark had. Do you want to speak a second about it?
A lot of companies now will tell me, well, we can't have paid internships, which is not true, because we all know that Thermo Fisher doesn't. But I don't take no for an answer, so what I try to do is say, well, what about a project? And they say, well, keep talking. I say, well, we can work a project out where our students will learn something, will build something, and then they will get a scholarship, you know, at the end. And then they say, well, I think we can do that, you know, and then they got to go up and try to get, right now, I'm negotiating with Quest Diagnostics across the street for a very, almost the same type of project, where our kids would be, would produce an anti-opioid campaign, students informing other students about the hazards of opioids, because opioids is one of the things over at opioid testing is one of the things over there at Quest, and the same, they don't want to do internships, but they'll do scholarships. Well, you get to figure out the math, it's better for our students to get the scholarship than it is to get the $14 an hour, you know, internship.
All right. How do they select the students? Was it an application process?
Oh, yes.
This was an application process.
I sent an email out to all seniors and said, you know, hey, this is this opportunity. A bunch of folks had an initial interest, but then they had to put together a resume and a cover letter and do interviews. We narrowed it down to these four outstanding ladies. And just, in the past, I've always tried to keep a junior, because that junior that we selected will be one of the seniors for next year, can kind of say, hey, this worked last year, this didn't work, and that type of thing.
So Boston Scientific, just to give you a quick update there, they will be, we will be submitting two names of juniors for six-week internship this summer. They're going to be working on developing a 12-month, one-hour-long STEM curriculum for an after-school program in Mileboro. Also, Boston Scientific just donated nine huge workstations they're going to use in our engineering lab. We've been told they're worth about $5,000 apiece, so $45,000. Okay, just a quick update about the superintendents. They came to visit on April 10th. It was amazing. We had seven of them here. They did a rotation through math, science, humanities classes. Then we took them in, and they did a student-led demo of the SEM, the Phenomen SEM. They were so impressed with that. Then we did a question-answer session with teachers and administrators back in our office. Next one, Mark? These are some of the, I got thank you emails back, along with those flowers that I got. That was, we forgot to take pictures, so that was the only evidence that we had, was the flowers that they sent to thank Anders and I afterwards. And then these are some of the thoughts, you know, "Thank you so much for opening the doors of AMSA to all of us yesterday. Thoroughly enjoyed the visit, and was particularly impressed by the students in the research course. Lovely getting to see AMSA in action, very impressive place. Your teachers are so devoted to the kids and passionate about their subject matter. And what a wonderful morning it was. Class visits, SEM demonstrations, the students were spectacular, and the discussion with staff at lunch is so heartwarming to be, with fellow educators doing their best to serve their students, just as it is the case with those in the traditional public schools." So it was a, it was a great day. Thoroughly enjoyed by everyone. Next one, Mark? All right, Basil Dazzle time, we're going to keep this really quick. Next one. All right, we had Science Night. This is a quick one-minute. I just, before we click on that, I just want to let you know, so we had a little pre-get-together with some auders, with folks from Quest Diagnostics. There was three or four folks from Quest and Viastat. It was very nice to interact with them. Quest was amazing, because they, you know, they came back. I got to experience some time with them, with Joe Ben Giovanni, our chemistry teacher, and Dr. Scott Jurey, head of our science department, and these four folks from Quest. And they're in the research lab, and they are lit up, and they're all like telling chemistry jokes. And so, you know, I was just nodding along and giggling with them. I didn't really know what they were talking about, but they were talking about all kinds of slides and Petri dishes, I don't even know if you call them that anymore, but they just, they were having a wonderful time, and the Quest folks were all over the lab, and they're looking at everything, and they're saying, my goodness, we throw away stuff that's better than what you have, and you've got great stuff. So let's get a list together on what we can get you folks. It was wonderful to have them, and they were so lit up, and they all want to be a greater part of AMSA. Let's click on this just to see our wonderful kids in action on Science Night.
This is just commonly used for cancer research. If it's tagged with a CD133 gene...
This is where we study. So the woods behind here, to do this, basically, like, our procedure, we start off by some, like, our apparatus of, like, actually where we're going to work the tests, testing with our XRF machine, which is x-ray fluorescence.
They go on the glass, baby. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Track a gene called CD133, our prominent one, which is highly expressed with cancer stem cells. So I think in terms of, like, the things here that are listed in the prose, I think people can see the benefits using this for your...
Are humans, humans are the only ones.
Put it on a glass slide, and then I put it under the microscope, and I got those pictures of the spores.
I guess it takes a lot of practice to kind of think, understand how it works.
Thank you so much for keeping me going here. You need a clicker, I'll get you a clicker. You need a clicker.
So we're 18 minutes over.
18 minutes over, oh, bummer. Okay, really quick. All right, so we had a student, this is Shane Frante. He qualified for the American Junior Mathematical Olympia. We're very, very proud of him. First student since 2011, when Nick Via qualified, so we're super happy for Shane. He took the test last week. Okay, we have Alice in Wonderland coming up, April 26th to 27th this weekend. Okay, we won't go into this, but we did a race car project here. Ms. Johnson's Contemporary Lit class did it. Black Student Union participated, faculty and staff participated, they had cards all around, and you tried to express your thoughts around race in six words. Great process, and I think gave everyone some time to reflect. Cold War trip, just a huge thank you to Eli and Anders and Brianna Murphy and Aaron McAdams and Liz Marina, who took 27 students and traveled with them to Germany, Poland, the Czech Republic, and Austria. It was an amazing trip, and here's some of our pictures of our amazing kids having a great time. Just take a quick look at there with Brianna Murphy and what she's holding there. She could scare anybody. I love that photo, I think it should be framed. And there they all are, having a meal together. Next one. Okay, and we also had the Glapco trip. You all might have heard that some kids got sick, they weren't our kids. So a huge thank you to Alex Waldron, Christie, Chris, Lisa Tebow, and Jack. They took 32 kids, they took eight flights, it was crazy, but they had an amazing time. And look at these kids at the equator, down under the water. There's Chris Brandis, one of our science teachers, with the big, huge tortoise in the back. Those are lizards on the left-hand side. And then we had National Honor Society Induction Monday Night, which was an amazing event, because it's a great opportunity, whoa, Mark, you went one too many. And the National Honor Society of kids, it was amazing. I love this event, it's one of my very, very favorite events of the year, because our kids get an opportunity to stand up and thank our teachers and appreciate them for the wonderful, wonderful gifts that they are in our students' lives. And it's so heartwarming, because they get to reflect back, and they get to say thank you to the people who have changed their lives the most, the educators who have taken care of them all these years. And the next one, you know, the Sox need some help this year, but in Alex Cora, we trust, because we still believe in the Red Sox, so I hope that you'll all send us some, that part is over. All right, thank you very much, everybody.